Do you think you want to start the meeting?
Let's go.
You're asking me, you're asking me if I'm ready?
Recording in progress.
All right, everybody, I have got six thirty one. We will call the regular meeting of the common council to order. Roll call, please. And I think Emma just texted me that her computer died, so she'll be on in a minute.
Okay, Seth.
Here.
Andrew. Be online.
He's not online. I thought he was online.
Well, maybe it was him.
Todd Kriking.
Here.
Emma. Pat Spade.
Here.
Cindy. John.
Here.
Crystal.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
And Justin.
Here. Say Popeye.
I think AJ is back in. AJ, are you there?
Can you hear me? Perfect. Thank you. All right. Pledge of Allegiance. Item number two, approval of the September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four regular council minutes.
And this is Crystal. I would move approval.
Steve, I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye. Host. All right. Item number three, council announcements. Any member of the council have anything they would like to bring up this time? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item number four, which is the first period for public comment. Any member of the public wishes to make a comment, now be the time. Come up to the podium, state your name, address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone online, Nate?
There's a couple folks online. If anybody wants to make a public comment, they can do so at this time.
Hearing none, we'll move on to item number five, which is update on housing advisory board work. Oh, sorry, I got the wrong one here. I'll change here. We'll get that one. Item number five is a public hearing regarding conditional use application for Brian Shot to use property located at eight oh seven Railroad Avenue for residential home in a B three zoning district. That will open the public hearing. I'm gonna have Lori kind of go through for the council. There's some newer folks, kind of what the process is on that, and then we'll get into it.
Okay, just so you're aware, the, from the public hearing, this is a time when the public can speak, we can ask clarifying questions, but we don't really post your opinions or ask too many questions because the next agenda item is when the council actually has their turn to discuss this. So I don't know, Chad, do you want me to kind of give a overview, or you want to go right in and explain it? Go ahead.
All right, so we had planning commission last night. They reviewed conditionally use for building a house in a B three district on the shot property. It'll be located just to the east or to the right of, you can see the words Railroad Avenue on there. Yep, somewhere in that area. A big chunk of that land, it's about twenty nine acres, a big chunk of it that runs along Railroad Avenue is a B three district, as you can see on the map. And then the east, eastern part, yep, in that area is considered an ag. So due to the ordinance for that, those two zonings, it does not, B three does not allow for just putting up a residential structure. But what it does offer is, how do I say it? I said it. Yeah, well, a conditional use, but it's caretaker for a business. Also farm, he farms it, it's got crops, he's got cattle, so on and so forth. And so that does fit as a, as an acceptable conditional use. So that's the direction that I, I sent the shots. And again, henceforth why we're at this point. So planning did approve it last night to move forward to council for your review and I'm trying to think that I.
The motion was to allow the conditional use for the house in a B three district, following the standards of the residential setbacks in the, in the R.
Yep. So they added that as far as, again, what she said, following the same requirements as a normal residential lot.
Questions? Got any questions for Chad? Nate, I'm sorry, Steve.
So is it gonna be? I guess it's not gonna have to have its own like a plot or whatever. It's gonna, it basically is that whole section?
Yeah, it, there were, there there is not a CSM involved.
Okay.
In this, at this time, although the shots did indicate that at some point down the road, there may be a CSM, but it's not part of this current conversation.
Okay.
What's the CSM?
Certified Survey Map basically subdivides the parcel so that it raises another legal parcel.
Do you have more, Nate?
Yeah, just, just as reference, the the chief and I looked at the comprehensive plan to sort of make heads or tails about why the zoning in that particular area of town is the way it is. As you can see, the B three zoning kind of shoots up there between the R zoning, which is that yellow color and the ag zoning, and it doesn't necessarily follow any logical natural lines and part of what I would, would guess is that maybe there's some distortion caused by how this was overlaid on the D I S map. But none of the comprehensive planning documents, two thousand six, two thousand seven, really tell us as to what the thought process there was in laying this particular zoning overlay over this piece of the city. But it really doesn't matter because even if you made the logical conclusion that maybe that whole zoning section should shift to the northwest, the frontage of, of the shop property would still fall within B three and still cause us to have this sort of same conversation and pursue a conditional use permit in this. There was conversation at the planning commission about cleaning this up when we get into the comprehensive planning process and can redo zoning. But as it is right now, this is the zone that everybody has to work with. So the, the shots are here as well. They spoke a little bit at the, at the planning commission meeting. That's sort of the, from chief and I and George Hopkins, our city attorney also looked at this and this is, this is the sort of plan that's in front of me.
It's completely surrounded by houses, as you can see up there, other than the farm building. So it it makes sense. And with the conditional use option, I think it fits.
Any questions? Any members of the public wish to speak to the public hearing? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to item number six, which is discussion with possible action on conditional use application for Brian Shot.
This is Todd. I moved to approve the conditional use application for Brian and Michelle Shot with using the same setbacks that the city uses in the rest of the city.
So we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Host. Most passes. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Uh, Emma. We're not sure if, I don't know. Is Emma on?
Yep, I'm here.
Did you vote in favor of that, Emma? Because I did not hear you.
No, I, my child came in the room and interrupted me, so I apologize. But yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Item number seven, update on housing advisory board work to date.
Okay, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you with our work up to date. We've been busy. The housing advisory board, for those of you who weren't, didn't know, this was created in September of twenty twenty two. The mission is to act as an advisory board to the mayor and the council on housing issues, strategies, goals, and policies. And we've actually had our first meeting in December of twenty twenty three. We've been working on a couple different things. I'm gonna have Nate have you go to the mission statement here. I'll tell you a little bit more about that. We're studying and recommending to the mayor and council both long and short term goals. We've got, we're hoping to find some innovative approaches to accomplish these goals and housing goals especially. And we'd advise the mayor and council about the impacts of city policies on housing affordability and accessibility. The housing board, the next slide, please, thank you. Consists of Sonia Nguyen House. She's a housing person. I gave these people loose terms because we were all asked to kind of fill a role on there on the board. But we're, some people have kind of morphed. So Aaron Parker is a subject matter expert. Josh Brown is also a housing person. Shane Davy is a lender. Tom Burkhalter is with the school district. Tanya Berkey is a housing person. Chris Rosacki started out as a lender, but he's now working for the school board. And then I'm the council liaison. So next. And what we first wanted to do was find out what we needed to know. And this turned out to be a way bigger task than we ever anticipated. We've kind of listed the speakers that we've had. I have a whole other list of speakers that could still be happening after this point. But we had Aaron Parker and Chief Burrows come and talk about attainable residential development. Jamie Reese and Kathy Reed from, were social workers from the school district, and they did a discussion of homelessness and how it impacts the schools. Pastor Pete from Zion Lutheran Church did a discussion of homeless needs. And Nate gave me a, an update on the North Point and Hanson Farm properties, which I presented at a meeting. Hettie Brown was there from Cooley Cap, and she indicated housing trends, challenges, and solutions. And we were all very impressed with the number of things that Cooley Cap does for the community. It's amazing. Hannah Ultimus came the very last meeting that we had a speaker at, and she's a Vernon County Education Director. And she's working on an upcoming housing study, and she asked us to provide a wish list. So when I did this slides, I'll give you the next one there. Thanks, Nate. We put together a wish list, and then in talking with her this week, I found out that she is going to be, they're going to proceed in a little different way than we initially thought. She is going to be doing an initial rollout of the housing stud, or the Vernon County Housing Study. This is confusing because everybody's got comprehensive plans and housing studies going on. But they're doing, going to be doing that the end of this month. And they're probably going to look to our libraries and other agencies that we have in the city to get the word out. People will then have eight weeks to respond to that and tell them what they'd like to see that, that study include. Then, starting in March, they're going to have some focus groups that they're going to put together. And that will be around the end of March. And that would include especially people from Verocua, Westby, and Hillsborough, where the housing need is identified and, and great. Their, their goal is to have the housing study complete by May of twenty five. So that's kind of an ongoing event. The recommendations to the council came out of a review of a lot of the ordinances that we currently have at the city that are in place. And as we saw earlier tonight, some of them need some updating. So we looked at them through the lens of housing and what, how they, how it's impacted by housing. The first thing on our list, and you'll hear this a lot from us, is we would like to complete a housing study for the city of Verocua. One of the first things we found out is what we didn't know. And it was a huge list. You don't know where to start from if you don't know what you're dealing with. So you'll hear that from me again. We also want to allow multiple family units on single family in single family zones. And I'm sorry, I haven't, I didn't bring my cheaters. We want to reduce or eliminate parking. Yeah. Oh, would you mind? Oh, my goodness. There we go. Reduce or eliminate parking minimums to allow shared and on-street parking to be counted towards the minimums. Because right now we have a lot of parking requirements on housing, and it's, it uses up a lot of land. Also, we would like to allow additional dwelling units and do not include parking requirements there. Adjust lot and yard standards to encourage non-conventional housing projects. Eliminate use-based zoning and move to form-based zoning. And I knew that you probably wondered what that meant. Use-based zoning is what we have now, and it divides zones for certain kinds of, of property use. As you saw tonight, we had an agricultural one, we had a housing, tried to figure out how to fit housing into an area that, that typically doesn't, we're using conditional use permits a lot. So form-based housing is based more on a market-driven. And the example that they came up with the League of, League of Municipalities was to prescribe large windows and entrances oriented towards the street to promote ground, ground floor retail. It's one of the ways. So what you're doing then is you're not saying this is the kind of use we want. We say these are the kinds of things we want in this place, and it will help us be a little more expansive as far as what we can allow for building. Consider creating standards for development to streamline the P U D process. Right now, that seems very cumbersome, the way we're using it. Prioritize workforce housing. Incentivize affordable housing projects. And I said, the, the Hanson Farm is a really good example of things that we're doing that are a little more on the innovative side. That's really exciting. Tiered code enforcement to encourage renovations that would otherwise trigger loss of grandfather privileges and short-term rental regulation. So that's what we've been at. Okay, then I'll have you go to the Vernon House. This is the wish list that we put together for Hannah Ultimus. Did I do something funny? Oh. Okay. Well, this is, this is a start. But I, and I was gonna ask for your input tonight, but I think the way it's set up now, we'll all have an opportunity to, to input. Housing needs assessment. Demographic census data. Identify number of secondary homes. Identify number of employees who would move here but for housing. Determine the need for workforce housing. And there's a lot of terminology with, that we've had to learn. Things we thought we knew what they were, have been defined differently. So we're all learning. Identify the number of owner-occupied dwellings. Identify a number of Airbnbs or short-term rentals. Determine number of people moving to Verocua from other places. Identify barriers to developers for building housing. Identify properties available for housing, both greenfield and within the city limits. And then single and family housing, what's available and what is needed. And I think that we're at kind of a crux because I said Vernon County is doing a, a comprehensive plan. They're doing a housing study. We're gonna be doing a comprehensive plan. We'd like to do a housing study. So there's a lot of excitement going on out there at this time. But it's all kind of in flux at the same time. So I think the, from the general consensus that I get from the board is that the housing board is that we're gonna take this time to educate ourselves. We might cut down our monthly meetings to every other meeting, every other month. And then the work groups, there's two work groups that are involved, wouldn't continue to meet monthly as they are now. So we are, you know, any help you can give us, especially in, in regards. One of our members, I think, has some ideas about people who could do a housing study for relatively inexpensive. I don't have that information with me, but the term was five thousand dollars. I don't know what you get for that. It's like what, what Trina's been going through with her her comprehensive plan thing too. So, but we've been busy. And I just wanted to update you and let you know what we've been up to. Do you have any questions?
You mentioned two work groups. I was just curious what they were.
Oh, they are. I have them right here somewhere. I got my notes. Maybe not. One of them is, is needs and a s, needs and something or other. Can't remember now. That's terrible. And the other one was looking at all of the ordinances. So they were going through. Oh, hi. What's the name of, of the, the two committees we have? This is Tanya Berkey. She's working with me on this. I'm sorry. That's okay.
Meeting started at seven. Uh, the, we have a zoning committee and I think a needs committee.
Yeah.
Needs and resources.
That's it. Needs and resources. Thanks. I couldn't remember the names. And these people went through a lot of the zoning where the, where the recommendations came from. I mean, they've been combing, combing through the books. Nate got us hard copies. So they're going through with markers and Post-its and making notes in those. And then the needs and resources kind of came up short because we don't have much data that's available right now to use to move forward. So that's where we're hoping we could have some kind of a housing study. So we know what we've got here and what we need here. That answer.
Yeah, I think so. I, I just comment, I think you've hit up, you've done a great job of identifying the things we need to figure out. Now we just need to help you
Yeah.
figure them out, I think, is where we're at with that. So thank you very much. I think.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. And Tanya.
Yeah. So anything else? Any questions from anybody? Thoughts? All right. If not, we'll move on to item number eight, which is discussion with possible action regarding Broke Welcome Center Design Agreement with Zettler Design Studio LLC.
Mark Zettler is here tonight. He is a preservation architect that has agreed to help us with the design of the Broke Welcome Center. He also was a preservation architect, did the evaluation in October of twenty twenty two. And he's, he said he's gonna tell us a little about himself and some of the things that he's done in the area. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am a preservation architect based in West Salem, Wisconsin. I've got a little over twenty years' experience in the business. I have primarily focused on various historic buildings over my career, from downtown rehabilitations to county courthouse restorations, school design, et cetera. Most of my business does focus around downtown-type projects. I guess I have done quite a few of the public sector jobs as well. I did help the city of La Crosse with the CDI grant project at the old Fish Hatchery Building in Riverside Park downtown. That project completed last year. And so I was the architect for the city, and then the developer had their own architect for the interior. So I did the exterior restoration on that. And I guess if anybody's got any questions, or we can kind of go through some of my recent projects that I've completed, I'd be happy to kind of show you some of the things that I do. So this was the Newburgh Menswear Project on Pearl Street in downtown La Crosse. I've got a before and an after and an interior shot. This project won best restoration in the state of Wisconsin last year. That is the highest building award given by the Wisconsin Historical Society. So that building was ninety percent vacant when we started, inserted four luxury apartments onto the upper floor, and then a interior design firm ended up taking the entire first floor of that project. Projects like this generally take multiple years, multiple funding sources. We had help with the city of La Crosse on this. They provided facade grants. We use state and federal historic tax credits. We did not pursue a CDI grant on this, but then there was also some additional funding sources that we used. The city paid for a feasibility study in the beginning. And I don't remember if there was TIF money on this or not. But this is what's possible with restoring historic buildings. This building had been vacant for over ten years when we started, except for the one storefront on the very end. So I guess we can go to the next one. Lighthold Music, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with that building. We completed the facade restoration in twenty twenty two. This won the W E D C Main Street Award for Best Facade Restoration in Wisconsin. That was about a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar facade project. We did the front, the back, fixed the parapet walls all the way around the building and restored the two-story storefront. And this project is just getting wrapped up. I'm gonna be going through and doing final inspection in a couple weeks. It's the former First Methodist Church and Eighth and King Street in La Crosse. It was converted into the Capella Wedding and Event Center, so it's a performance hall and multiple wedding venue facility. So you could see the before picture. Basically, it was a really rundown, dilapidated nineteen seventies finishes and we opened up the, this was not a tax credit project, by the way. We opened up the ceilings and the trusses that you see in that picture were always in the building. They were just concealed by plaster ceilings. Found where the old skylights were, reopen them, put new skylight units on, and then found a historic photo that there actually was a two-story space. And in the fifties, they had framed that shut. So we found the old lines by taking down the plaster and reopen that to a double-height space. And then one more quick project. This is the old Southside Senior Center. Originally, it was fire station number five in La Crosse. I teamed up with two contractors. We bought the building from the city. So I was the architect and developer. We put two apartments on the upper floor. We're in the process of putting some sort of event center. It's gonna be smaller gatherings on the first floor, and the contractor actually took the basement for his woodworking shop. So we are just a few months away from having that project hundred percent complete. And just kind of going back to your housing study with the last point, something I would recommend to the group is to actually try to quantify how much square feet you have in the upper floors of your buildings downtown. We were very surprised in La Crosse with the tens of thousands of empty square feet in all of the buildings on Third Street, Fourth Street, Fifth Street. So a lot of those spaces are underutilized, and there are a lot of good government programs, like the historic tax credit programs, to help revitalize and get those spaces reoccupied. Does the group have any questions for me?
Thanks, Mark. So I don't know if we want to pass it back to Cindy, and then maybe questions will come up as we talk about the proposal. So you wanna, okay. So the reason this, part of the reason this is before everybody is that we had a conversation with W E Dec, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation regarding the CDI grant, which is sort of the last piece of the funding puzzle that needs to come together in order to make the whole project funded. They had identified that a portion of the application needed to be completed, and that was a line that stated who your contractor is. And as I explained to the representative Mark Tomlin, I said, well, we're a public entity. We can't, we can't give you what the contractor is until we go through the public bidding process. We'll come to find out this particular grant and their definition of shovel-ready is very different from what we're used to understanding as shovel-ready. For instance, the Public Works Department's sewer project EPA grant, shovel-ready is many, many, many steps behind. Where this particular grant says you have a contractor until they've already, they're ready to go. Whereas with that EPA sewer grant, I don't even think we could go so far as actually select an engineer to actually start designing the sewer project, or maybe there's some nuances to that. But long story short, we kind of got caught in this misunderstanding with W E Dec. And essentially, they would like us to move forward towards getting a contractor. And so we're sort of taking a two-pronged approach on this. One is Mark has agreed to help us by reaching out to a general contractor and basically presenting the concept plan and said, if this went to bid, do your best. do your best to provide an estimate and would you bid on this type of project? And then we could turn that into WEDEC and say, you know, in lieu of having an actual contractor ready to go, what we can give you is somebody who'd be interested in doing the work. And here's generally what they would put forth as a cost opinion. The second part of that approach would be to have Mark brought on board and begin the process of actually designing the project. This was sent out, this proposal was sent out as part of your council packet. You'll see there in that schematic design portion through construction documents that this first wave, I think Cindy woke us the math on it, it was close to 48, 46, somewhere in that range. What the proposal, I believe, to the council tonight was it would be to authorize this proposal up to.
Seventeen thousand, five hundred.
Seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand, five hundred at this point. And that would be contingent on the Tourism Commission releasing their part of the funds, which is a meeting that would happen tomorrow morning. So if the Tourism Commission is on board with releasing their funds, we would move forward with Mark starting the work and starting to meet with the design team and putting this closer to having actual construction documents, which then would allow us to eventually go out to bid and have a contractor in tow. So we're hoping that that's amenable to the council. And I don't know if there's anything else.
You did talk with Mark Tallman about the fact that we're going to reach out to a contractor, and he seemed to think that that would be acceptable to the committee. And he said the committee is interested in funding the project. They just need to have this that square filled. So, uh,
I did reach out to a contractor, and so basically I need to bring them up to speed tomorrow with the results of this.
Okay. And Mark has agreed to doing, starting the schematic design and other things that he can do up to the seventeen five. And then we're hoping at that point we will have heard from the CDI, from WEDC that we've received the CDI grant, and then we can proceed with the total design team fee. So what we're asking for tonight is, I guess it'd be two separate things, or it can be one? Approving the seventeen five to go ahead with this part of the project, and then once we get the CDI grant to proceed with a total design team fee. Did I say that correctly?
And of course, the, just to be clear, the council isn't putting forth the seventeen five. That would be authorized by the Tourism Commission. So none of the money that the council has pledged to this project is yet being requested. It's simply allowing the contract to be executed, which is a council right. And that would be, that would be contingent on the Tourism Commission tomorrow, releasing their funds to pay for the first seventeen five.
I apologize again, as I being late to the game on a lot of these projects, kind of right by, but this is all in regards to the bathhouse?
Yes, Broken Welcome Center is what we're calling it now.
Okay.
Yes.
That wasn't even.
That's a good question.
Located and where we were going with it and do so we have a rough idea of what our end goal is for that. I mean, it's not just restoration. We want to make that a viable.
A visitor center, information center, meeting room, public restrooms. The chamber is going to have their, we're working on working on having the chamber have their offices there, and it sounds, we're very close to getting that lease agreement finalized.
Wonderful. No, I just, in my weekend wanderings thought, boy, that's where the public restrooms need to be for downtown stops. Thank you.
There was a concept plan that was drawn up. There's actually been a couple, but the latest revision has four private offices, a meeting room, and two public restrooms.
And the information center.
And the information center.
And just for more backstory, the the funding package for it is is 250 from the CDI grant. Around 238 of TIF money that had been sort of allocated to the project two and a half years ago. And then 200.
We've raised over 260,000 now. Matching funds.
Private donations and allocations and the allocation from the Tourism Commission is part of.
The seventeen five, yeah.
Again, definitely helps me in being new to the council and seeing where the big picture is along with being late to the fire department stuff, knowing what a little.
Yeah, I can send you the plan so you can see. It's pretty exciting.
Yeah. And then just as of the nap, she, you know, Cindy mentioned the tourism or the chamber, but the chamber is working, the lease agreement they worked towards is having the chamber being the core tenant long-term, and then they would basically be in charge of operations of that building as well as what we're trying to push towards is is making sure they're handling all utility costs, all maintenance costs, things like that, so that long-term operating impact to us would be minimal, right?
And Ethos has agreed to provide $25,000 solar panel pergola, pergola, pergola.
Pergola.
Pergola. Yeah, installation and the price of it. So that would reduce energy costs and electricity, so.
Any, any other backstory? Sorry. Thanks, Huf, for interrupting. Any other backstory from anybody else needs on this? Okay. So again, did anybody have any questions on sort of the pitch this evening?
Well, I have. Sorry, I have a question, and I'm not sure it had more to do with the contract.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
It was in regard to the special testing was not included. And they said that, you know, it would be if if identified it, it'd be an hourly rate, and an hourly rate wasn't in there. And I'm concerned because of the age of the building, possibility of lead paint and the integrity of grout, those kinds of things. So I just just wondered if that would be addressed at some point.
Lead paint was looked at, gosh, two, three, or four, or five years ago, and they found just a little in the boys' area, in the shower area. That has been addressed, maybe Mark.
Yeah, and I'm not concerned with like the masonry testing. So what, if we don't want to pay for testing, like 90% of my downtown projects don't. If I'm working on a courthouse or something, yeah, they want it because they're dropping tens of millions. But we just use a softer mortar, which is in line with the Secretary of the Interior Standards, which is the historic rulebook for working on historic buildings.
Okay, thank you.
And there may be some ancillary costs as we work through the project. I mean, there's a healthy contingency within the budget to deal with things like having to do some hazardous materials testing and things like that. Part of that was done years ago when the roof was removed. And so we already have some of that work has been accomplished, although that may have been compartmentalized to just the roof structure.
No, the whole building was looked at for lead paint. Yeah, I remember.
Other questions?
So between the the TIF money and the private donations and the grant, is that fully funded then now? Or is there more donations that need to come in to completely cover the cost of it?
Yeah, we'll always take more donations.
Right.
No, it should be more than enough.
Oh, okay.
At this point, yes.
Good.
Then we did, like Nate said, we have a really healthy contingency built in too, so.
But just to be clear, the CDI grant is, that's part of what we're trying to accomplish today is securing that. And the hiccup, as Cindy, you said, it was articulated to me that they are, and I'm trying to say this in such a way because, you know, obviously, none of those people can make commitments, but they're interested in the project and they want to see us complete the application so that they can yeah, they can take that next step. And so I'll be at that.
If the if this the tourism funds this component of it, and for whatever reason, which I don't think we have an indication that would, but just if they did decide to not fund the project through the application process, would the tourism be looking for money back?
You mean if the CDI grant didn't go?
Correct. If the grant didn't go through, then the project would have to hold until.
And we would continue. We don't plan to give up on it.
Well, for sure, but I think it would change your timeline. So Mike, much like the the VDA project, there, there was an initial investment, and then they, you know, needed to get out. We're wondering if.
We're still going to need a schematic design. Some of these basic things will need, regardless.
Sure. Absolutely. I'm not disagreeing with. I'm just wondering if this happens, would they come back to the city and say, well, we didn't get the CDI grant, so we'd like our seventeen five back?
No, because we'll keep on with the project. We're not going to give up on it. That would be.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think part of the reason, I, I think going to the Tourism Commission, it should be very, and I think we will be very blunt with them, like this is money committed, right? Regardless of what the outcome of the CI grant and everything, this is money committed, and there is no return on it once it's spent.
Sure.
Right? And for the, for the reasons that Cindy explained is.
We're not giving up on it.
Right. But nonetheless, yeah, there, there's no refund to the Tourism Commission.
And I, I wouldn't, I mean, as close as you are, I would expect you keep going in some sort. And I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't a stipulation or could potentially become something that came up later down the road if there was an issue. So.
Great. Any other questions? That we are looking for a motion then to accept the agreement?
All right, this is Steve. I guess I'll make the emotion that we authorize the proposal up to $17,500 contingent on the Tourism Commission releasing the funds. And then what else do I need? Based, yeah, also these are going to be two separate ones. So that one's good. That's my motion.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Seth, I second that.
Got a motion in a second. We'll do a roll call.
Todd Spade.
Hi.
Cindy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Crystal?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Seth?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Todd Kirkland?
Hi.
And Emma?
Hi.
Right. I'll take a stab at the second one.
Well, I guess just.
Approve the total design team.
Okay, yeah. Make a motion that we approve the total design fee contingent on the CDI grant being granted.
This is Crystal. I'll second.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Do a roll call again.
Cindy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Crystal?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Seth?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Todd Kirkland?
Hi.
Emma?
Hi.
Todd Spade?
Hi.
All right.
I do have.
Thank you, Mark.
I do have one question on this before we finish. On this agreement, you have Cindy down here as the signatory. It really should be the mayor and myself, just so you're aware of that. I don't know if you want to do a new one.
Thanks. Yeah, I look pretty important up there. I'll sign it, yeah.
All right, moving along, we will move on to item number nine now, which is discussion of possible action on Welcome Center Design Team.
I'm sorry, I jumped the time.
Usually I do that.
Yeah, that's, that's my fault.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, for the Broken Welcome Center, the team, we would like to consist of Randy Skinner and Karen Innes from Broken Historic Preservation Commission, and also they've been on the task force raising the funds. Myself, Nate, and then two from the chamber, because a part of the lease agreement that we're working on has them have the okay also on the design. That would be, we have not, well, be the chamber director, so that would be Lorena, and then a chamber board member. And I have, we, we don't have one yet, do we?
Yeah, at this point, I would just, they, they, thank you. I think the chamber hasn't had time to weigh in on this portion of the project, so I would just leave it very simply as two members to be identified by the chamber.
Oh, so not necessarily the director?
They haven't had it. They haven't spoken about who to put in this spot at this.
Okay.
All right. Thoughts on that? Nothing? We take a, what, a motion to approve that or?
So the only, the only thing I would just give pause, and I hadn't had a chance to talk about this with Cindy, is if Cindy acts as council representative on this, it's but it is technically still a park and rec building. I know Park and Rec Committee has at times questioned like, why are we still in charge of this building? And it hasn't been used for parking rack purposes in some time. But until the decision is made to say this is no longer in Park and Rec's purview, right? Is there a reason why anybody from a parking rack committee, Cindy sits on Park and Rec as well, so noted, but I just want to throw that out there as this is still technically a parking rack building. Although there has been conversations about them saying, can it just be a city building at this point and not under our guise? So just some, some thought to that. But I don't see a.
So we probably don't need to, Cindy checks both of those boxes for now, and then we can have a future discussion. I'm sure Kale would not mind getting that off of his plate. So, but we can have that further down unless you would like another representative from that.
No, no, I'm just throwing that out there just because that just kind of came to mind here.
Yeah.
And of course, whatever the, the, the design team would check in with the council and or Park and Rec to kind of, once they get to schematic design or design development, those stages, and say, hey, this is where we're at. Are we trending in the right direction? The chamber seems to be good with it. And so there'll be that check-in process, but this would be the team that would sit down and, and sort of you know, respond to questions and, and work with Mark directly.
To formally do a mo, look for a motion to approve that roster, if you will. Yeah.
This is Crystal, and I would move approval of this design team to include Randy Skinner, Karen Innes, Nate Torres, two members from the chamber, and Cindy.
You call it Broken Welcome Center?
Yeah, Broken Welcome Center, excuse me. Thank you.
I don't say them.
I've got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item number 10, discussion with possible action regarding amendment to the Court Street Privilege to Ridgeland Renovations LLC. That's the Hotel Fortney. Restorations, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it might be restoration. Anyway.
Yeah.
So, um, what you see on here is a picture of the Hotel Fortney on the Court Street elevation. If you focus on this picture here real quick, you'll, you'll see that there's concrete stairs, and then as you travel it down towards Rock Avenue, there's an ADA compliant ramp. When this project was done, they came to the city and asked for what's known as a privilege in the street, which is essentially, we want to build something in the public right of way. And the reason they needed this is because it just gave them access to their storefronts in a much better fashion. And so the city granted them the privilege in the street. And their amendment to that was included as, as part of your pack, and I'll pull up here in Word documents. George went ahead and looked at this and essentially redid it. And it basically just grants them the ability to do this and has all the stipulations there under, right? The key one in all of this being that if any point in the future, the city decides, hey, we need to revoke your privilege in the street, we are not required to compensate them for, so they understand, like, you build it on city right of way, we'll grant you the ability to do that, but at some point, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, somebody may decide to, to yank that. So that, I'm not saying that because I see a need to ever, you know, pull their privilege in the street. I'm just saying that to you is it, it is a safety valve. The second page was also included, and that's where that language is at. Why this is coming forward for amendment is you can see here in the third option here, this is the proposal that they are currently pursuing, and it has posts here that also come down in the public right of way. And so in some ways, you consider this a fairly procedural sort of vote tonight is to basically update the privilege in the street to include essentially the new plan, which is to add a canopy, but the post that connect to the public right of way, right? My belief is if they were doing this one with the cantilevered option, there wouldn't be any need to amend the privilege in the street because there's no additional impact to the public right of way by having that canopy. Approving this tonight, I would approve it contingent on approval by the Historic Preservation Commission of this change in general. So this is a locally designated building, and in order to do this, they need a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation. And in order to do this, they need a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission. Which they intend to meet on the twenty first to discuss further. And so um. If it ends up going in a different direction, there's no need to actually execute the privilege in the street. Um, but if they do agree to this option, then we would just cause that privilege in the street to be recorded.
Thanks, Nate. Questions?
So they haven't made up their mind yet as to which plant they're gonna go with. But at least, yeah.
As of right now, they are pursuing this third option, but they are working with the Historic Preservation Commission on that. And so we're. Uh, they had met, Historic Preservation met.
Yeah, we met Monday and uh we're leaning on the middle one versus the cantilevers instead of the posts. Because it, it looks, well, we think it looks better. It sticks more to what the. How the look is for that era. Hotel itself, but.
So if they decided to do something similar. On another entryway down, further down the building. Does this allow them to do that or would they have to come back to the council and?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we did ask that they, for the next Historic Preservation Commission meeting, would provide. Uh, a rendering showing all the entrances that they intend to change to that model. Um, and so therefore this privilege in the street would be, and we'd have to double check that with George, that it's actually written as such in the, in the document. Um, but that this privilege in the street would be granted for. All. Um. All entrances adjacent to the. To that sidewalk and. Laurie's doing some quick looking as to whether it. Specifically calls out that one entrance or the entire. Oh.
Do they, sorry, the uh uh privilege, what was it?
Privilege in the street.
Do they have that on Main Street or is it just on Court?
It's just on Court.
Right.
So what kind of emotion do you need from us? That they will approve the uh in, in contingent on.
Yeah. So you, you would approve the amendment of the privilege in the street contingent on. Um, approval of the changes in general by historic, but yeah. Uh, the changes um being approved by Historic Preservation Commission.
Questions? Now we look for a motion.
Okay, I'll give it a whirl here. This is Crystal, and I would um. Pro or a mo, move that we approve an amendment to the Court Street privilege to res, to Ridgeland Restorations LLC for the Hotel Fortney. And that would be contingent upon historic preservation. Um.
Approving a certificate of appropriate.
A sec, certificate of appropriateness.
Cindy, everybody. Cindy, I second that.
All right, got a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Just one more question. So. It sounds like they are planning to possibly do stuff on some other entrances in the future. Um. Is there a certain distance? I mean, can they go beyond what they have already um shown here? Or is there a certain limit that they can go out into the setback?
Yeah. Um. So when they submit their um privilege in the street, we usually have the accompanying documents. That show this is exactly what they're going to do in the street. It's almost like a development agreement. We're not going to sell you this land unless you do specifically what you said you were going to do. I would say it's, it's, it's fairly, fairly the same. And so that's why um. We've asked for the renderings to see the three other.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because before the circuit, certificate of appropriateness can be granted, they want to see what the whole.
Okay.
Exterior elevation is going to look like.
Okay.
Any other questions? Now I've got a motion in a second. We will, um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Sorry, I saw Lori lifting up her paper. I thought, well, I don't know why we gotta do a roll call on this one, but whatever.
You guys are really keeping an eye on me tonight. I don't have to do anything.
Right, yeah.
All right, we'll move it on to item number eleven, which is discussion with possible action regarding former city hall site design process and team.
Yeah. Okay, um. Through the chamber, we were in, put in touch with Aaron Welty, who put us in touch with a landscape designer. And this is offered, his services are not going to cost the city anything to design uh what we should do, the old former city hall site. And we're going to get a, we've met with Garrett. He's been here and looked at the site and we walked downtown and visualized, you know, his ideas. And then we want a design team also to work with him. To come up with this plan. So. That's what we're talking about tonight. Uh, the design team for this, uh Deanne Crowsey from the Historical Society. Um, Karen Innes from Historic Preservation, myself would be for the council, uh, chamber board member, Nate and Kale. Since uh it's a park and rec, you know, eventually they would be mowing it or doing hopefully as little maintenance as possible, but. To get his input also.
Um, and just as backstory again for some folks, um, this property was, and I can't remember the timing, I think it was designated historical while you were here, Seth. So this. So, so the site itself is a um historical property, a local historic property now, which is why there's a heavy emphasis on. The Historic Preservation Commission and the Historical Society being a part of it. Um, whatever happens on that site will need a certificate of appropriateness granted by. The Historic Preservation Commission, similar to what's going on with the Fortney, which is again, why there's a heavy emphasis on, on that membership. And then it was always, it's always been somewhat talked about, I think in council or at least. Generally that this would be a collaborative effort between the city, the historic preservation and Historical Society and the chamber, because that is going to be a. Uh, a focal point for entering into the um, I guess, the bulk of the downtown.
Kind of an entrance to the downtown um historic Main Street.
And it uh just. As a heads up, you know, there's, there's not. A ton of money here for this designer. I, Cindy and I are, will kind of suss this out, but I, I don't believe that this is going to get the design process far enough where we're going to have like construction documents ready to go. I think this is going to get to us to a point where. We have a concept plan, we have general direction. Um, we've done some sort of um. Vision boards, right? And sort of doing some envisioning and then hopefully a, a opinion of probable cost. And then we can sort of package all that together as part of the capital improvement planning process so that we know generally better what we're doing and how much it's going to cost us. And things like that. So the timing is, is, is perfect on it. Um, but I don't think we're going to get to the point where. Again, we have construction. Oh, now we're, we can take these and just build it. Maybe we can, maybe I'm wrong, but um Karen and, Karen and I. Think that way and Cindy's like, no, I think we're going to be able to ready to build. So we'll see, but it's free labor. Um, and that we appreciate the support from WDEC and the chamber on making it happen.
On, well, sorry, I, on that, I just wanted to, I just gotten an email, oh. Just in the last couple of days from uh local business wanting to talk. About some plantings and some different plant things there. So I'll get them in contact with. Maybe Cindy, I'll talk to you after the meeting and fill you in on that. And because I think there's a local business that would like some.
That's, I was going to ask the same thing. It was just, is this person from our area? Like. How did they find us? Or did we find them? That's what I was just curious.
Aaron Welty recommended him. He's from, he lives in Mount Hore, but he was here in Vroko growing up, as I recall. He said something about a. Relative or so, he knows Vroko well, yes. And then like I said, we spent time walking around downtown to show him, you know, get a feel for what's happening here. And I did hear the Lions Club wants to plant a Christmas tree. Was that what you were going to say?
Uh, no, I was. I was not gonna say, I was just curious as to. Um, this person's connection to our town versus. A local business that might want to offer the same service. That's all. I was just curious.
Yeah. Well, he's done a lot, pardon me. He's done a lot of this before. He's done stuff in Eau Claire. If you've been downtown Eau Claire, that was his plans. He's done, done it around the state, so it's not like he, so he knows what, how to do this. And like I said, it's Aaron Wel, it's provided, you know, free of charge up to whatever point it is.
Yeah, and the folks that had reached out to me simply want to deal with the plantings. Like they, they don't. Haven't indicated they want to do a, a whole site plan of building things in the board, you know, the whole thing. They just want to be.
Definitely want native plants and.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah. Hopefully they'll help upkeep it.
Yeah. I think so. So I just wanted to add that. So. Um, so there's no money, so no cost, but we need a motion to kind of go ahead and allow that to happen.
Approve the design.
And the team. Sorry.
Yeah, this is Steve. I guess I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we. Uh, accept the former city hall design process team. Sure. Oh, is it both? Process and team. There we go.
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item number twelve, discussion with possible action regarding selection of municipal prosecutor for Circuit Court.
Oh, okay. Um, as we've discussed, uh, we are exiting municipal court and intend to start taking all of our, I guess, business. To the Circuit Court starting in November. And therefore the city needs to secure a municipal prosecutor to represent us in Circuit Court. Um. The uh, I reached out to a couple of different individuals. George Hopkins also uh put his feelers out for who would be available. And at this point, we have. One proposal. Um, and that is. At uh his firm and uh. He is currently the interim prosecutor for the uh municipal court that we were a partner with. So he was covering the Hidden Valleys Municipal Court and will be continuing to cover them until uh then in November, December. Um. He submitted this letter, which was included as part of your packet. Um, he has experience acting as municipal prosecutor for other communities um regionally. Um, I would imagine that he's also intending uh to be a candidate for Coon Valley, who also uses Circuit Court. Um. His fees seem reasonable. I did have George Hopkins look at uh his contract proposal and he had noted that everything seemed reasonable to him. Um, I did send this to Chief Needfeld, um, just to get his uh subject matter uh opinion on it, and uh he didn't seem to have any concerns. I didn't know if there's anything you thought of later, Rick, that you wanted to add, but. Um, he felt comfortable uh with this individual. There is no long-term commitment. Uh, you'll note that it's an hourly fee agreement. So that way of, for whatever reason, we felt that this just wasn't working out, whether it was too expensive or it just, we weren't. Getting the results or, you know, whatever it may be. Um, we can go our separate ways and locate a different prosecutor, but this would get us in line. To have somebody who generally knows our community, has been sort of working with us for at least the last few months, and would be up and running, ready to go. Um, come November fifth, I think is our first court date at Circuit Court.
Great.
So we, as you're reading that, we did, I did reach out to Sheila Olson to just generally talk about. How work can be conducted and um. The preliminary hearings, they don't show up to, the prosecutors don't show up to. If there's a not guilty plea entered. Then they would be referred to the municipal prosecutor to either work out a plea deal, or if a deal can't be reached. It would um come back and possibly go to trial. Um. Once they hit a point where they have to come in and, and do some, there is always the option for Zoom. Um, or doing a virtual option, which is what a lot of folks, um, some folks, I guess, continue to do. So the mileage and, and some of those ancillary costs um should be mitigated quite a bit. Um. So we are trying to keep cost down, of course. I. The twenty twenty-five budget does have an increase. Um, for this reason is because before we were, I think it was six seventy-five a month with, which amounted to about eight, eighty-one hundred dollars or something. So I did add another two grand into the budget for next year, just not knowing where things were going to land. Uh, you know, not. Not knowing exactly. What the workload were going to be. There will have to be adjustments to the budget as we go along here. Um. But I feel confident right now and, and just touching base with him that this, we should land in a good spot.
Thank you, Nate. Any other questions? Uh, we were looking for a motion to uh approve the municipal prosecutor. Oh, Bruce Hart.
Okay, I make a most, now I lost it, that we approve uh the municipal prosecutor for Circuit Court, uh, approve Bruce Hart as the municipal prosecutor for Circuit Court.
This is John. I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
John?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Seth?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Todd Kirkking?
Aye.
Emma?
Aye.
Todd Spade?
Aye.
And Cindy?
Aye.
All right. Moving along to item number thirteen, discussion with possible action on capital improvement plan process for twenty twenty-five.
This particular item is coming back for a second time. Uh, after our last meeting, I had met with uh all the department heads at our department head meeting. Um, to get their feedback and suggestions on this process. Um, it was a good conversation. Um, their number one piece of feedback, and I would encourage any of the department heads to come up and uh, you know, uh, speak on this, if I get any of this inaccurate or if I, I left something out, but really. That they should have more involvement um in the process. And so really the biggest change here is after the public um presentation, there is this department head review meeting. Where they can provide feedback and try to create a consensus among the department heads to sort of help provide additional guidance or feedback. Um, to the committees, to the council. Um. Chief Needfeld in particular had, you know, this good idea about doing some peer reviews and some peer learning when it comes to the project and um. In essence, uh, that's not exactly what's up here, but um part of. Uh, sort of the benefit of that is gained by all the departments sort of getting together, looking at each other's projects, talking about what priorities are. Um, talking about what they're seeing at ground level, maybe a slightly different perspective than what the department had in charge of that particular project is seeing. And so um really trying to help each other out and, and providing that perspective is a big change. Um. At the end of the day, the department heads who are in charge of their projects still have the ownership of how. They are prioritizing their own projects so as to just sort of give that. One of the. Things that I had identified from the process last time is that. When the department heads got together along with mayor and myself, we actually started cutting out projects. Before the council had a chance to consider them, and we just wanted to make sure that we weren't doing that this time around. Um, so that the council could have a, a clear look at all the different projects. But otherwise, uh, and for the most part, the process is very similar to what we looked at at the last council meeting. Department heads, is there anything I missed in there? Anything you want to add, subtract, otherwise? Here comes Sarah.
As you can imagine, this is near and dear to my heart, or my department. Um, wasn't there some sort of like priority within the department about projects and like, I don't want to say a veto, but like the idea that. If the subject matter expert understood one priority being above another, there was some sort of like feedback there. Okay. Do you know anybody else remember this?
So. Um, the, the key. What I remember saying, and, and maybe this isn't what you're getting at, but that the department head who brought forth a project and said, I believe. Center, Center Avenue is the most important thing, but the rest of the department heads disagree and say, no, it's got to be Education Avenue or it's got to be, you know, Johnson.
Right.
The department head who brought the project forward still has the ownership to be able to say, I, I appreciate your guys' feedback on this, but I, as the sort of. as the sort of person in the driver's seat on that, I'm going to continue to keep Center Avenue as my key project. Right? That was sort of the conversation at the table. Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, that was one of the challenges I had last time, and so that would be very helpful to have, make sure we're on track.
And so, yeah. Anybody else? Hail Chief Trina. Thank you.
Well, I know there was another thing that they brought up was the fact that by allowing them to work together, there was the possibility of sharing of resources on a particular project as well, so that we wouldn't know what they were unless we saw all of them and were partially involved, so.
So, like Nate said, it's, I think that's the only real change is right there. The rest of it's what we looked at the last time. So I think we're just looking for a motion to basically accept the newly proposed.
Yeah, the the only thing I will touch on is that there is a second department head review, uh, meeting to go over what the design, the, what I'm calling the review team. Um, what they come up with the same, hey, this is what we think the approved project list should be for the 2025, 2029 cycle. The department heads would then have a chance to look at that and said, yeah, we see what you did there, but as a group, we want to talk about it and maybe give you some feedback on it. So it actually sets this in this process, there interjected two spots for the department heads to come together as a group and and weigh in.
I I missed something. Where did you say the council was going to get more of a say in this?
That's a, that's a question, yeah.
That's what we talked about last.
So in general, this, this approval process follows along the lines of the budget process, um, where, uh, last cycle, we didn't have the review team, which was intended to be made up of um, possibly the mayor, myself, and a couple of council members. They would have more of the responsibility of crafting the package. Um, that is the twenty-five, twenty-nine approved project list versus department heads were more in the driver's seat on crafting that. And then we're making cuts and rearranging priority lists and pushing it up to council. This puts more of the ownership back on, um, the selected members of council to put it together, so. I would say this is a much more balanced approach. It's somewhere in between budget team and CIP last time is more here with a little bit more weight towards the council.
I was at the meeting where the department heads talked, and I think this really gives them a good opportunity to, you know, it was very compelling, the argument that that they'd all made as to why this is a good reason. So I I think it's worth definitely.
They certainly know what their nudes are.
Yeah.
Other than me doing some.
Yeah. So, yeah, so if there's nothing else, we're looking for a motion to.
This is Todd. I'll move to approve the capital improvement.
No, I'm sorry.
Could I just stop before you go into emotion, but did you want to talk about the design team or the review team tonight?
Yeah, and before that, with inherent within this is the selection, you can actually see at the top, there is, is the selection of the the review team, which is that four to five member task force that would be set to really sit down with all the projects and figure out how they can put together a approved projects list. Again, thinks similar to the budget team. Um, and so if there's anybody who wanted to put their name out there, I I think one of the suggestions at the last meeting was to try to find a couple of council members who through their appointments to the committee, sort of cover the swath of of park and rec, public safety, public work, so that they're sort of can look at it through all those lenses.
Yeah, and Cindy has volunteered, I think, to take one of them. And I think she'd be a great addition to that group. So I think we would like one more alder person that's willing to.
Public works and park and recs, you need a public safety person.
No one else, well, I'm on public safety. I'll throw my hat in. Just, I guess, uh, when do those meetings tend to meet?
They'll be during the day and you'll have to bring coffee.
Sweet.
Yeah, so, uh, we, we usually, once and Todd and and Crystal can attest to this, once the team gets established, I hound you relentlessly until you give me your schedule. Right? It's like, what is your, I mean, we need to lock this in because everybody's very busy. And so I reach out to you and we put, I I I'll give out like six options or something.
Sounds perfect.
And then.
It's funny because it's true.
I will find you. We will get these schedules. And it's, you know, it's, uh, I it's going to be similar to what the budget team went through. It's going to be four weeks of of meetings, maybe a little less because there's maybe not as much and, um, but.
Great. Yeah.
You wanna?
So Todd, we could.
Yes, I will move to approve the capital improvement plan process for 2025 and the, uh, members of the, uh, the the process, uh, the team that you just elected.
Now I'll say it in.
All right, we've got a motion a second. Is everything in order for that, Lori? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, thank you too for that. Um, item number 14, discussion with possible let's see, review discussion, possible action on 2025 draft budget and au- and authorized publication. This is probably going to take more than a couple of minutes, isn't it, Nate? Let's take, let's take five minutes here.
You need a break? It's only twenty-seven slides, guys. AJ, I think we're.
Yeah, we're back.
Just thirty-second warning.
Thank you.
Ready when you are. Oh, shoot. All right. All right, yeah, so well, I think everybody's back. We'll go back to item fourteen, which is.
Recording in progress.
Twenty twenty-five draft budget and authorized publication.
Okay, so, uh, this was sent out as part of, uh, uh, in addition to your, um, council packet on, I believe it was Friday. Um, the next step after tonight is to, you're going to authorize publication of this draft budget. And then in two weeks, I think it's the first meeting in November, we'll host a public hearing. And at that point, because it's a public hearing, I'll just give a a a little bit longer presentation. So tonight's is intended to be a little bit shorter. Um, I think multiple council members have seen this. You've sort of, uh, especially if you're on finance, you saw the draft last time or at the last meeting, committees have seen drafts of their, um, department's budgets and so on and so forth. So I'm going to try to keep this somewhat high level, but of course, if there's questions and you want to drill down anywhere, you're more than welcome to. So, uh, the draft budget, uh, as soon as I can pull this together here, um, again, a note on financials, the one thing I'll, uh, make an additional note on is that I had the intention of showing the variances as variances to the amended budget. As you know, we amended the budget, uh, about midway through this year to account for changes in health insurance. Um, but then when I started doing it, I realized that it would just take a lot of work on my spreadsheets in order to change how the variances showed up. And rather than spend my time doing that, I just continued with showing the variances against the original budget. And hopefully, everybody can understand there was only a handful of GLs that actually changed, and I can point out as we go. Um, here's what the budget team's approach was, and, um, I've sort of added to this over the years, um, but there are a lot of considerations that the budget team had to make as they looked at, uh, these different items, levy limit, flexibility, um, making sure we get our expenditure restraint money, um, improving our general fund cash balance. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Trying to get wages equal to or better than CPI, um, dealing with inflationary increases has been the name of the game for the last few years. Um, addressing those department priorities or the goals that were talked about at all the committee meetings several months ago. And then all, as always, trying to find a balanced approach to spending money to deliver services, but also not uh, trying to overtax, um, our residents. Levy limits, again, um, for those of you who aren't aware, is a main consideration for, uh, communities in Wisconsin. Essentially, we're not allowed to, uh, increase our levy, our tax levy on the community more than what uh, net new construction has increased, um, which is part of the reason why so many communities are struggling through inflation. Uh, as of right now, uh, and you can see this from that graph, is is slowly but surely over the years, we've gotten closer and closer to losing, to, um, exhausting our flexibility under levy limits. Um, inflation is certainly one of those considerations. Uh, one of the things that's in there as well is the lease obligation for the city hall project that is, that shows up as an operating cost and not a, um, a debt service. So that's, uh, another, uh, large driver. Uh, we've added some, um, positions in the city. Those always, uh, chew up, uh, levy limit flexibility. Uh, expenditure restraint, again, I talked about this briefly at finance committee, but essentially this is a, a, a somewhat different sort of restriction, um, and this is more of a carrot than a hard ceiling. So basically, say, as long as you keep your, um, increase in expenses under a certain percentage, which is defined by CPI for the last twelve months, plus sixty percent of your new construction, will give you a supplemental, um, state aid payment. And in twenty twenty-four, that state aid payment was almost eighty thousand dollars. So if we want to continue to receive those eighty thousand dollars in funding, we have to make sure that every year that we're falling under whatever the threshold is for that particular year. Cash balance, we talked about this at finance personnel as well, is when we did our, when we walked through our S and P rating, one of the deficiencies that they found is that we had negative budget performance in previous years. Some of that was by design. We paid, we spent almost two hundred fifty thousand dollars paying down our unfunded pension liability before we refinanced it. Um, and so that was a purposeful hit to our cash position. But in other ways, um, we've had, um, just some negative performance over the years. Some of it was due to timing of capital projects as well. Uh, but needless to say, I think one of the things we really need to make sure we do is protecting our cash position and adding to it where possible. And so a couple of things that we've done in this budget is, um, prepare for people getting paid out, uh, upon retirement, which is not something that we've budgeted for in the past. Um, and then creating a health insurance contingency, so that way if we do have fluctuations in health insurance or the enrollment doesn't go exactly how we'd expect, or maybe there's a mid-year change, that there's some, um, some contingency money to play with. Um, it may not cover everything, but it certainly will help the cause instead of having to, um, sort of, uh, as what happened with the library, we had to cut down our maintenance budget in order to cover that. Well, now our maintenance budget is is really strained this year, so that contingency should help with that. But that's fifty-two thousand dollars of additional spending. That's not really getting us additional services, okay? And then this list here is just the list of all the department goals and priorities. I won't go through them one by one, but this is the notes that I took as I was listening in on everybody's committee meetings. So this is something that, you know, as the budget team was looking at everything, was in the back of our minds, even if we didn't have the list right down in front of us at the time, we sort of knew this is is what would, what had been discussed. So to get into the meat of it, this is what the expenses look like year to year. It's a three hundred and forty thousand dollar increase. Again, the way that I show variances on the expense side, if it's an increase in expenses, then it's going to show up as a negative number, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We'll get into that a little bit more. This is what it looks like by department, um, including their capital projects. Okay, same number, but it's broken out by department instead of type of expense. And this is the same, um, graphic except excluding capital projects. When you include capital project, it makes public works look like they're spending a ton more money. And that police looks like they're spending a lot or a lot less money compared to the previous year. But that's is really skewed because police department isn't requesting a vehicle this year where the public works department is asking that we pay for the second half of the dump truck. And so to sort of remove that skewed element and focus really just on the operating, um, components of the budget, this is a more realistic view. Okay. Um, overall, uh, this was a a very challenging budget year. The budget team requested a lot of cuts be made in order to meet the thresholds that we talked about, both the ERP threshold and. the thresholds that we talked about, both the ERP threshold and to maintain as much levy limits as we possibly could. So the cuts essentially went in three groups or phases. We made targeted cuts based on what the department heads submitted. We said, yeah, we understand what you're looking for, but we can't afford that. Let's cut that. After we were done doing that, we were still left with a gap of what we needed to, we needed to find. So we cast the department heads with finding us another fifty thousand dollars worth of cuts across the board. Then it ended up being fifty-four thousand dollars because of just some late changes. But ultimately, between that and some health insurance changes, which we'll get into in a second, we found just under two hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts that we needed to make from when the original budgets were submitted to where we're at now. And it's important to note that doesn't mean that that's the money we cut off their budget that they were approved last year. This is money that was cut over their, their new asks. Because as you can see here, there is no department except for other, and that's due to municipal court that is receiving less money than they did the year before. Now, let's see, did I have something? No, we'll keep cruising here. So here's the department budgets. I feel like I'm missing a graph around health insurance. Does anybody else feel like that? So the department budgets are as such, and this is sort of broken out with type underneath. So administrative here, a lot of this is due to additional money going to tourism, which it looks like we're spending a lot more, but we're actually, it's actually not positive for the city because we're bringing in fifty thousand more of revenue. And then this miscellaneous insurance has to do with across-the-board city expenses. So vehicles, property, workers' compensation is going up by about twenty-four thousand dollars. And so that's a cost that we're absorbing there. Fire, really small increase. Again, a lot of where you're seeing this is, especially in the fire department, is preparing for a new building. And so needing to have more money set aside for fuel and utilities. And then wages, and a lot of what that is, is to provide a stipend, I guess we'll call it, for fire officers who are on call. And that provides the opportunity for the chief to step away and use paid time off. Because as of right now, that is. Let's see, library side of things, the biggest change you'll see is in the benefits. And this can be, this is just essentially due to, one is the increase in health insurance, but more so is the potential change in enrollment. So if you remember, the library is one of the areas that had a health insurance change. And so that's taking this, this is taking that into account, but also with some change in employees over there. I built in a forecast for maybe what this new yet-to-be-identified person would take as health insurance. And so then built that into the budget, which is why it's increasing. And so you can really understand how much health insurance impacts a budget when constantly in every department, that seems to be our, our challenge. Let's see, other, again, this is mostly due to municipal court going away. So a large amount of the cost there are being, are savings. But again, losing municipal court is actually having a net, a net negative impact because we were expecting, even on bad years, a couple thousand dollars in net revenue from court costs. We're still expecting a little bit of that, but it is, it is about a two thousand, three thousand dollar change overall for us. Park and Rock is one of the few departments where there was additional investment in some of their ancillary requests or their, I guess you can call them discretionary, you can see the add to repair and maintenance, some add to wages to give them more hours on the recreation and maintenance side of things. You'll see in the previous departments that equipment and supplies is the area most often cut in order to make the budget work. So here in the library and fire, some of that is due to just not needing as many tires for the replacements that they're doing this year, but some of it was as a result of being asked to cut budget. Same thing goes in administrative. You can see here, our building maintenance budget was cut by three thousand dollars to make the budget work. And the same thing holds for police and public works. You can see that in the police department, it was all these sort of discretionary areas that were reduced in public works. That's where some of the biggest changes happened. It should be noted in there that part of the reason that budget is decreasing is because public works has access to a little over eleven thousand dollars of non-lapsing funds that they can use to get the same amount of work done. But it doesn't have to show up as in the operating levy, if that makes sense. And again, here, a cut to equipment and supplies of sixty-five hundred. And again, the reason that their benefits are so much is that public works was the one area where we had the most changes to enrollment. So ultimately, there's, there were that sideline. Ultimately, department budgets increase, or increased, but at the cost of a lot of their money to, for equipment, supplies, maintenance, other things like that. So it will be a tighter year in that respect. Some of the other changes that we made, and I referred to this in earlier aside, was in the realm of health insurance. One of the really challenging things that the budget team did was to reduce the cities portion of the insurance premiums. So currently, it's at eighty-eight, paid by the city and twelve percent by the employee. What this budget recommends is an eighty-five, fifteen split instead, which would create thirteen thousand savings, but would, with the rates that we have now in front of us, increase an employee's annual share by this amount, which is not insignificant. To boot, we implemented, as you know, that health insurance opt-out arrangement, which is approved, I believe, at the last meeting. Originally, we had it in the budget to be a fifty-two thousand dollar savings. We still believe, I mean, I still believe that that is a very achievable number. But until we see what actually happens, what we've done in this budget is change, is bring that expectation down to a forty thousand dollar savings. And then what the plan would be for next year is, once we see what happens after open enrollment period ends, we would then look at any savings we have, bring the budget team back together, have them consider all the things that we've cut, see if we can backfill some of those things, see if we want to make any other changes, particularly, you know, look at wages again potentially, because the cost of living continues to creep up. And, you know, have a, do once again, like a holistic look at all the items that that money could be spent on and then do a budget amendment to reallocate those savings accordingly. I'm going to pause here. I see some questioning faces. Does anybody have any questions at this point? Go ahead, John. Do you want to use your mic?
Yeah, make sure you turn your mic on.
Excuse me. This isn't a poke at what's been done. I don't mean it that way at all. I just want you to be aware. I've been through more budgets than you can shake a stick at over the years. And every time we hit a year like this, where we got a cut on this supplies and we got a cut on this, these, all these minor things, it comes around and I hear two or three and bites us right in the behind. And just be aware that that's coming. That's all.
To, to that, and Nate and I talked about that, and that you're exactly right, I think. But the reality of the situation where we're at, when you look at, you know, the levy limits and all that, we could have maybe gotten away with less cuts this year, but they would have, would have required significant cuts next year. And I, I'm not, I'm just, you're exactly right.
I wasn't poking at you.
Right, no.
I didn't mean that at all.
Hundred percent, but I think.
It was a be-aware statement.
Right. And I, I just am bringing this up because that is true as well as next year. You know, it's tough. And I know the department heads felt pretty rough after this process. It wasn't an easy process for them, and they all gave up things that they felt they needed. But in an effort to get the budget to a balanced state with a little bit of cushion, that's where they ended up. So John's exactly right, but I, I think there's, we can look to next year to probably be in a similar situation based on some things now with growth and increased tax base. Hopefully, we, we can see that separate again, but that's going to take a couple of years at least.
Just thinking about that consideration of the timeframe of what these investments and when we see dividends to that opening.
Now, part of what we did here is we implemented some, some changes. I'll go back and we talked about that. Fifty-two thousand dollars that was added just to cover an employee retiring and taking their cash-out payments for unused sick time and vacation time. That's, that necessarily won't have to increase next year because we've taken into account this year, right? IT, IT across the city is costing us about forty-two thousand. So that's an add, but that number we're looking at, I'm going to suggest at the next meeting that we look at a three-year contract with these individuals. So, and that will hold our cost there for the next two years. So we won't have to make another forty-two thousand dollar increase into our budget. And so some of the expenses were jumps this year. And as a result, some of the things that we're used to buying had to get cut to make room for it. But then as net new construction and state aid, supplemental state aid continues to creep up for us, we should be able to not have maybe as, as stressful of a year. The piece that is continuing to concern me greatly is, is wages of staff. And we've had multiple discussions about where we're at as a city in terms of competitive wages or lack thereof. And that we are going to need to address that as part of the next budget cycle, in my humble opinion. And I would even like to consider that as part of, if the opt-out agreement goes as expected, to consider some relooking at wages for twenty twenty-five. And that's just my perspective as the administrator. Anybody from the budget team? I'm doing a lot of talking on your behalf. Anything I'm missing or misrepresenting?
No, just, I, I think you, you hit all the parts, right? Like, and the wages is a, is a big thing. And that's really where I think the budget team really gets hung up the most is trying to figure out, you know, how can we have some balance between making sure we get the wages up? And with the inflation we've seen over the last few years and the health insurance, which we don't have any real control over, once those numbers come in, then you're kind of left to put the pieces together at the end and do the best you can with wages and still meet the needs. And
it's just kind of being able to visualize and see that it's going to be the last curve of what can catch up with where wages should be and something a restaurant can change next week what they pay somebody because of the, raise the price of their food. Well, we've got that whole cycle that has to get through government steps to get to taking care of that. And it sucks that that takes that wave.
Yeah, for sure. It's, it's, and it's not just isolated to one department either. That's what makes it even more difficult. I mean, across the city, there's, there's room for, for fixing that.
So moving on from expenses, this is just what the revenue looks like. As you can see here, the, and somewhat to, I think the point Seth was trying to make, there's not a lot of changes in some of our non-taxing, non-state aid revenue. This is mostly the increase to property taxes in order to cover the increase to expenses. And this is the addition to state aid. And then there's a room tax increase in there as well. But everything else is, is, you know, these, for the most part, zero out, right? This is excluding capital projects, which just gives you a slightly different look. Again, this is what we're looking at when it comes down to property taxes this year. So here's what the levy's doing. Twenty twenty-four, we're at two point six one five. This year, we're looking at two point eight one three, which is just a hair under two hundred thousand dollar increase for our tax levy, about a seven point six percent. Here you can see our total equalized values are just going through the roof this year. Fourteen percent increase is just a very high increase. Those, in effect, are causing the mill rate to actually go down because we don't have to tax as much per hundred thousand or per thousand because there's just that many more thousands to tax, right? And you can see here that the tax levy continues to creep up where the middle rate is just plummeting, mostly because equalized value is increasing at such a rapid rate. One thing I think is important for us, and when you talk to the taxpayers, when you look at that one hundred and ninety-eight thousand that we're increasing the levy by, note that of that one hundred and forty-seven or almost one hundred and forty-eight is due to what we need for additional debt service. And that's due to the fire station and the other capital projects that we loaned out for this year, hitting the debt service next year. And again, that's not to cast a finger at the fire station in any way. That project, in some ways, we're getting for a song because it's a total investment of under four million for that building, really buoyed by the contributions from the townships and the, and the USDA grant through the congressionally-directed spending. But it, it's really to point out this, this last number here is, this is really the additional money we're asking from the taxpayers to cover our operating costs. Fifty-one thousand dollars is the additional money that we're asking for taxpayers to get us where we need to be next year, which is, and you know, given a government of our size and the nature of inflation is a pretty scant amount. What it means is, here's, when we talk about levy limit flexibility, this is what we could take as a debt adjustment or is what's known on the levy limit forms as a debt service exemption. And here's what we're actually taking, which means we have about forty-three thousand of flexibility going into next year that we can play with before we hit levy limits. And you can see every year that green line is creeping closer and closer to the blue line. And that's what part of our concern is going to be, is we're running into a ceiling here.
Nate, can I go back to that?
Yeah.
Just so you're aware, that levy limit flexibility can change from year to year, and it may actually go down specifically because once you pay off some of that debt, your amount that you're actually allowed and the adjustment that you can take goes down when you pay off your debt. So that flexibility isn't necessarily because we're using it up. It's because we're paying off debt.
Well, yes and no, but our, our total tax levy would also decrease. Right? So that's what happened in twenty twenty-four. So, and, and the perfect example is here, in twenty twenty-three, we thought that the, the debt for the city hall would hit. Right? But because of delays in the project, it didn't. And then we found out that that wasn't going to be a debt service item at all. It was going to be an operating cost in form of lease obligation. So therefore, the total levy taken dropped, but so did the debt adjustment drop as well. So some of those things are going to flow together, but the gap, this is the gap between them, should remain the same, right? Because it's going to be a one-to-one change. Your debt service exemption is going to go down, but so is your total levy by the exact same amount. Does that make, does that make sense?
Not really, but I'm not going to explain it however you're trying to explain it. Because what I'm saying is, when you pay off your debt, the amount of your exemption is lower because you don't have as much debt that's allowed for you to take as an exemption.
Right, but you're also not having a levy for that debt service.
Correct. But then you're also adding probably new debt so you can try and keep the flexibility the same.
Right. And if we add new debt like what happened this year, the exemption goes up as well. So those things should, should continue to sort of bob and weave together. What loses our flexibility is when we increase the operating budget. That's what impacts us. The debt service, yes. The flexibility number is the delta between the two. So when we add debt service, we're going to add debt service exemption. Right? We'll double-check that. How about Lori and I make sure we double-check that? Because I think I'm right, but I think Lori also thinks you're right, but we'll make sure we're on the same page on that. Finally, the taxpayer impact is Finally, the taxpayer impact is shown here. Um. Again, this is the mill rate per a thousand of equalized value. I did this a slightly different this year in twenty twenty four. If you owned a two hundred fifty thousand dollar property. This is what the mill rate was, and this is what your annual property taxes would have been. This year, given the new mill rate. Um, which is seven point three three and a fourteen percent increase to your property value. This is what your new property taxes would be for the same house. And this is rough, of course, like each home is going to go, their property value is going to increase differently from one another, um, based on a variety of factors. Um, but. This is essentially that person, their additional payment and and taxes going into next year, which is always an important thing. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that. Otherwise, we would be looking for a a motion to publish. The draft budget and to put together a public hearing on November. Help me with the date, Lori?
Well, I believe. I'll make a motion. Oh, you want to do it? Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Todd. I make a motion to um. Accept the twenty twenty five draft budget and authorize publication. And what was? What was the other one?
Public on November twelfth.
Okay, and then bring it to a public hearing on November twelfth, you said, twelfth, yeah.
Thought I was saying.
All right, any other, we got a motion a second, any other discussion? Would assume that should be a roll call. We'll do a roll call.
Crystal.
I.
Steve.
Hi.
Seth.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Pat Kirkking.
Hi.
Emma.
Hi.
Pat Spade.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
And John.
Hi.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. Move on to item number fifteen, which is payment of the bills.
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
I second paying the bills.
Got a motion a second, any questions? Roll call, please.
Steve.
Hi.
Seth.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Pat Kirkking.
Hi.
Emma.
Hi.
Pat Spade.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
And Crystal.
Hi.
All right, with that, we'll do second period for public comment. We don't have anybody in the gallery here. Anybody online? Eric Nunn, I would take motion to adjourn.
So Todd will make a motion to adjourn.
Steve, I'll second.
All right, got a motion a second. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Post, we are adjourned. Thank you.